Ladies and gentlemen, it is six o'clock. I am calling this meeting of the Maisel Manor Village Board to order. The meeting was properly posted on June seventh. Roll call.
Erin.
Here.
Bill. Dearson.
Here.
Nicholson.
Here.
Ruland.
Here.
Schlan.
Here.
Springsfield.
Here.
We have a forum, so we will conduct the business. Item four, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented? If not, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Scott. Second by Jerry. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. And opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item five, approved minutes from the last regular board meeting to meeting of May twenty-eighth. Motion by Jeff. Second by Ray. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item six, appearances and significant correspondence. We have two ladies who wish to speak on un-mowed lawn, Diane Lucas and Joan Drager. Ladies, you have the floor.
Mine got taken care of last weekend.
Okay.
Yeah, the kids came in and did it. Hers did not.
Okay.
Mine is the Wells on Curtis Street, which is right next to us. We have the duplex, or I have the duplex. And someone was nice enough and came and mowed a front portion of it. And I picked up most of the boards that were there so he could mow through it. He also did tangle up his mower on part of it, that wasn't. But I'm concerned, well, unsightliness, of course, and I was trying to sell our duplex. Doesn't look good. The back part also is already knee-high grass that can't be mowed right now. There's stumps back there, there's... He had burn pit back there and a pile of burn wood. He's got an old, hmm, cart that has to be hauled away. It's just, we face that property because our back door faces that property. Our whole patio faces that. And I would like to get it mowed. I would like someone to do something. I know that I complained about the TV that was on the front yard and the letter was sent, and that's gone. I looked in the front screen door, there's bags, black bags of stuff there. I'm not sure what, but it's... I'm just worried about rats.
Or it eats everything.
Everything. It's... It should be taken care of. It should be policed, even though it's abandoned, somebody owns it. I know he's still around supposedly, but I was told that because it's an abandoned property, the village can't or shouldn't do anything, and something has to be done.
Well, we can. We take these ordinances seriously. Peter talked to me last week about this particular property. Peter, do you want to talk about where you're at with this?
I talked to you about this before, about, oh, it's not because it was an abandoned property, it was because it was in the floodplain. And the ordinance that I was using to get grass mowed said that floodplain properties were exempt. It was pointed out to me this week that there's a different ordinance that we could use towards it. I've already called the wife about this issue, to get it mowed. They'll get a letter. That's part of what's going to come up under the number sixteen on our agenda.
Okay.
They'll be getting a letter. So we found that ordinance that we could use. Before, our hands were tied, we couldn't do anything. Actually, I asked them to get it mowed, and I didn't realize it was someone else that mowed. And I assumed that's how it got mowed, because she said, "Oh yeah, we'll get it taken care of." I just called her up.
I don't...
Tried to be polite about it and asked her to get it mowed.
He also mowed the house on...
Dolores's house next to it.
And I had called her about it, too.
Yeah, that one got done, but...
Well, we're glad about that, yeah.
The gentleman that did it the first time, just did the front, he also did the one next to Colossix on Hudson, and it was Amy Jackson. But since then, Mr. Lawler, who takes care of Dean's in the back, has been mowing that. So that's all kept up.
Yeah.
That was all taken care of.
And as far as the backyard, I can't do anything if I can't see it from the street. I can't go on anybody's property.
Oh, you can't?
Right.
Well, that one you can see on the side of the tree.
Well, I can see the tall grass now from the street, and that's why...
Are you talking about the Wells one you can see from the street?
Yeah, I can see the tall...
You'd be welcome to come on my property and get over there.
I'm just not allowed to do that.
I'll even give you a beer off the deck.
I would love to, I would love to, but under advice from her lawyer, I think. Everything I have to do has to be from the street.
Yeah, so something can be done with that one.
Yes, that's... We're working on it, and it's already started. The process is already started.
And that will be the woodpile, too, that you can see from the street, or...
If I can see the woodpile, yes. Right now, all I can see is grass. We mow the grass, and then we see the rest, then I can do something else.
Oh, you'll see the rest, okay.
Right, yeah.
And we still have no idea when that might be the whole thing taken away?
That they're in the possible buyout group, and we won't know anything. We might get a couple indications this fall as to where it's at.
It's going to take a long time.
But as far as FEMA, the final approval for that property may not be till the spring. And in which case, then we can start the whole process of appraising and making offer.
I know before we built the duplex for my mother that we actually donated the house to the fire department to come and have a good time, and they had a whole day of it. Is that something that can be considered at all, or you have to wait until...
You have to wait until FEMA takes it over and goes to the village, then, right?
And I'm not sure if we do purchase it, if we can do that kind of thing with the fire department. But that would... We would have to talk with our fire chief about that anyway.
Yeah, and they just came and burned down and tested it.
And it would be at the village's expense to tear it down, because we would buy it as is at that point.
So the process on this home has already been started, so we will follow through on that.
Okay, good. It's not only the appearance, it's the mosquitoes.
Yep.
The rats.
Yep.
And everything else that's living in there. And you know the squirrels and foxes, and I know the foxes, because I saw them yesterday morning.
And that's the ordinance we're working.
Okay.
That's the ordinance we're working. We'll...
So it will be taken care of, okay. We're done.
If the time is... Clock is running through, it's going to be taken care of.
All right, so you're sending them a letter, hopefully they'll be there and clean it up, and...
Yep. Yep. I've reached out to Erin to explain why it's different, because when I called her up the first time, was saying, you know, I can't make you do this, but if you could really mow the lawn, that'd be great.
The gentleman's name that came and mowed the front porch, because he had heard through the grapevine that I was talking about, his name was James. That's all I know, and he was so nice.
It's true, it did look bad.
Yeah. And even now, it's a little high in the front, but I... I mean, once a month is all I'm asking, just keep it down. So wonderful, thank you very much. That was easy.
That was easy. Except when you got done with the...
Report, I have nothing. Item eight, the administrative report is in writing. Any questions? Hearing none. Item nine, deputy in charge report, Deputy Keller, you're on.
All right. Relaxed your pressure tonight. In total, two hundred and eighteen calls for service in the month of May in Maisel Manor. Like I had mentioned at last month's report, there's, again, on this report, just a small spike in the animal disturbance calls and the neighbor trouble calls. That is kind of the second wave of that issue that I said was, you know, isolated. This isn't all of Maisel, this is one specific neighborhood. That problem is set sees, but you're going to see those numbers on Maisel's report. In total, thirty-two citations, municipal citations issued for the month of May. Again, fourteen of those were the animal at large problems stemming from that one isolated incident, and then a variety of other municipal citations and traffic offenses. Couple other things, just to put on the board's radar for coming up in the future. Our first summer rec date is going to be June twenty-fifth. Just put it on your radar, that kicks off for six weeks. And then we're also having our own national night out event at the Wisconsin Heights High School. A joint effort between Blackhurst and Maisel Manor Public Safety Departments, which we host the dare August sixth, five-thirty to seven-thirty. So feel free to spread the word, we're trying to advertise some stuff.
Any questions, Kyle? Thank you for a very succinct report.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Items ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen are all second meeting of the month. Item fourteen, Lake Marion update.
We're in action to discuss with Lake Marion. First off, with Crowls Construction, they requested that we close out their construction contract from 2018. There was a retainer held back at the end of the project because the finished landscaping was done in December. We expected that it would not fully come in, and it hasn't. I did a walk-through last week. We've been patiently waiting because it's been such a cold spring. We don't want them to come back and tear up anymore than they absolutely have to, and it's better for everybody. So last week, I did a walk-through with Tom Tumist, and we... He identified the areas that we agreed on. He identified that by map and formulated a letter to Crowls that asked for them to come back and restore the areas identified in the map, and also addressed two other issues of work that was not completed in the scope of the project. And it does not need to be completed, but there needs to be a payout adjustment. And so we haven't heard a response from them on that, letting the engineer take care of it, but I expect sometime in the next month, hopefully, they get in here. And if they don't, we'll take the retainer and have somebody else do it. The other item with Lake Marion that I've been working on is with regard to aquatic planting and fish stocking. I've been drilling impatient with nothing happening. I've been waiting for the aquatic planting to move forward with the fish stocking. Anyway, I sent a letter out about a week and a half ago to the team of engineers that worked on that project last year and said, "Ask for any risks that we may face with that lake sitting dormant as the temperatures increase, and that increases the risk of it basically staying over, and ultimately, just trying to get the thing completed so that the public can use it and we can put it behind us." So the biologist that Rob Montgomery has been working with, I was able to get back in touch with him, and he said, "As long as the plants are coming this summer, the fish... The plants don't have to come ahead of the fish. The fish can come first, if it works out that way, as long as the plants come at some point. There's plenty of oxygen." So with that info, I circled back to the fish stocking permit that the village had obtained from Chris Long and a DNR employee who has since retired. And anyway, took that info and started over. So the new DNR fisheries manager is working on updating the recommendation, stocking recommendation, and also the hatchery, private hatchery that had quoted us in 2015 is now working on a updated stocking recommendation with a quote. I have a... I have a quote based on the 2015 recommendation, which is sixty-one hundred dollars. That information, the hatcheries didn't agree with. They felt that it should be modified, and that with the modification, that would involve two different stocking episodes over a two-year period, it would significantly reduce the cost and maybe more successful with the fish stocking. So I'm waiting for that info. I expect I'll have it soon. They've been pretty quick about turning this... This stuff is... Most of this information has been back and forth in the last forty-eight hours, so... I'm sure by the next meeting, we'll have a recommendation. But just off the cuff, at this point, it looks like even if we did move the fish stocking ahead of the planting, it's not physically possible to get the fish before September, October. So it's irrelevant at this point. But we still need to get a contract and get things locked in so these fish are available when it's time to move forward.
Could you stock that with minnows this fall? So you've got aquatic minnows, because minnows, they... They'll stock that through the winter and into the spring when you put fish in.
The hope is to stock it maybe even this month with minnows.
Okay.
That's... The hatchery said if we did anything in the short term, it would be to stock minnows so that they can hatch.
Start to establish, or... Yes.
What would their food source be?
Minnows.
The minnow... No, but what would the minnow's food source be?
It's kind of like when you take regular fish in a pond.
Bugs.
And they eat the bugs, they eat the algae, they eat whatever. We never fed the fish out in their pond and made crew.
That human sacrifice that we have to do.
Oh, that'll do it.
Mark? I have to stand the DNR grant, I was planning on doing that tomorrow. Should I shoot for something like October for them? Because we could... If we can do it, if I can stretch it out, I can squeeze some of the fish stocking into it.
What is the DNR grant?
The DNR grant is a fisheries grant for... It's... It was to cover aquatic plants, and we were planning on the aquatic plants because then we didn't think we'd get the fish in in time before the deadline. But if I can... I'm going to have to extend it for the plants anyway. But if I can extend it out further... The deadline is the end of this month. And I... They... When I talked to them last year about extending it, they thought they could probably give us another three months, but I was going to try to see if I could shoot for another four months and get it to the end of October and get the fish in.
I would shoot for 2019, but...
But as far as I can push along? Okay. That's all I need to know, pushing as far as I can. But we'll need, for sure, three months, but...
We'll need longer than that.
What money is Bill?
I don't... Off the top of my head, it's a forty-five percent... We get forty-five percent on what we spend. And we've already taken a draw. I can get you the numbers, I don't have them off the top of my head.
I was operating under the information we had no money for fish stocking.
Well, because we weren't planning on using fish stocking, because fish stocking is so far out. But now, if we can squeeze it in, I can squeeze it into the grant, the bet. We've got enough money underneath, just above that fifteen thousand for the plants. We've got enough money that we could put some in for the fish stocking.
Well, either way, I'll be back with a hard quote and a contract to hopefully execute. And with that, we'll have... I've been working with Bradley Brunker from the Wisconsin River Sportsman. So by... When I come back with that contract, I expect he will have a contribution dollar amount at that point. That's all I've got.
We do want signage out there as far as swimming. There are four people swimming in there today.
Really?
Yeah. One in an air or two, one in a little foldy raft, and one can just swim in out in the middle.
I spoke with Mark, he's got a full plate. Jerry, if you give me the wording you want on the sign and the size of the sign, I'm working with Rick Mueller on a project for the bank, and I can get his attention quickly.
No glass?
Well, you... You give me a list in the next couple of days, size of the sign you'd recommend, whatever. Get it to me, I'll get it ordered.
Three by five, somewhere in there. Two of them, at least. Two or three.
What was the size you said?
Three by five is good.
I'll take care of that.
Black on white?
Yeah.
All right. Rick will come up with something.
Okay.
Anything further on Lake Marion? Hearing none. Item fifteen, there was no 2020 meeting. Item sixteen, violation of property ordinance.
The list that I gave you in your pack, we're down to only three properties. Two of them got mowed already. And we still have the vehicle, I haven't gotten an answer yet back on that one. And then, as you heard in the conversation we had earlier, there's some properties now that were in the floodplain that we've never contacted before that are being included. So they'll be getting it, including the Wells that we just talked about. And the 218 Bridge Street, they have half their property is tall grass by the creek. And the big lot behind the DCHA housing, which is owned by DCHA, is all tall grass there. And so that's in the floodplain, it's never been asked to before. But now, with this ordinance, we have to ask them to. So those three will get letters also.
What about the property on Park Street that the police had given notice for cleanup?
That, the blonde... He got a letter, and the blonde got mowed.
Oh, and the fucking mowed.
Oh.
You're talking property on Park Street.
He got a ticket, I haven't heard if it's gone to court yet or not.
Okay. And the property at the end of Crescent Street?
Oh, and that one, that one is work... Tracy's working with them on that, and he's not letting them slow down. They're planning on tearing it down. But he's been working with them on that. They've seen some progress, but he says he wants to keep pushing them. So we talked about that on Monday.
Is there anybody doing the Bible with Hudson?
I don't know. I just know that the grass is really tall there.
Yeah.
I don't know. Oh, and then also I contacted the railroad, I haven't heard back yet about getting the railroad car to mow.
Any questions with Peter on property ordinance?
I guess I heard from a couple of people that there might be someone living in the storage units down there by the industrial park.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Which ones, ones... On the side of the highway?
Closest to the road, I saw someone coming out on like a skateboard, and it pretty much looked like he was living there.
Oh, the ones on Hudson and...
That's still in the village, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah. All of our police officers take a look.
Well, in the middle of the ones facing Hudson Street.
Okay. IPI there.
Same type of thing, Scott, up on the highway. And one of those units, so the police were able to put a stop to that.
Yep.
If you pull it right here, someone moving around tonight.
Okay. Okay, I'll let them know.
I'm on that same line, in the old Tony Walker's building. It looks like there's black curtains up. Are they using that as a residence behind it? Because that's...
Tony Walker's building?
Where his offices?
Where it belongs. Yeah. There's black curtains and plants there, but I'm just wondering if behind that, if there's somebody living there. I talked to Bill today, because he asked me when I knew about it, and I know nothing about it. But he said that somebody upstairs said that there were moving sewing machines on there. So I don't know if it's somebody's opening up an alteration business or what.
Further questions, property ordinance? Item seventeen, flood update? Anything?
Nothing new right now.
Moving on to item eighteen, we have nothing in old business. Item nineteen, no business. Sue informs me that we can take items one through seven in one motion. They all have to do with liquor, but I do need to read those. Under new business, item one, class B beer, class C wine license for Base Camp LLC. Item two, class A beer, class A liquor licenses for Maisel Market, Dollar General, Car Valley Cheese, Maisel Liquor. Item three, class B beer, class B liquor licenses for Parkin Inn, RJ Saloon, the old Feed Mill, Wall Street Gallery and Bistro. Item four, class A beer license for Maisel Mobile. Item five, temporary class B beer licenses for Maisel Manor Music Conservancy for Lake Marion Concerts in the Park for August sixth, thirteen, twenty, twenty-seven, all in 2019. Item six, temporary class B beer licenses for Maisel Manor Music Conservancy for First Friday and Maisel Concert Series for September sixth, October fourth, November one, December sixth, all in 2019. January three, February seven, March six, April third, May one, June five, July third, August seven, all in 2020. Item seven, operators licenses for Shelley K. Drager, Natcha Islam Barini, Susan H. Martins, Sarah Nicole Kanig, Dana Mary Rice, Kurtsey Benke, Lenny R. Spurley, Richard W. Royston, Deborah L. Schrader, Carolyn Crowe, Julianne Vernig, Diane Nancy Whitty, Emma Rae Peterson, Rose Makinia...
Jolson.
Jolson. Candace B. Heathner, Charles Dries, Sheri L. Moyer, Cynthia Elizabeth Lawler, Rebecca Lynn Conley, Jessica Boyt, Michelle Lamott, Debbie Monica Allen, Timothy Scott Louneau, Beth A. Marty, Tammy K. Geek, Melissa Ray Schlamp, Camden Nathaniel Brown, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen license here. Carston Stephen Flodel, twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen license here. And then, just to clarify, all these businesses are current as to taxes?
I'll be checking them out before I release this, after I get done doing all the licenses. I won't release them if there's anything outstanding.
Okay, so there would be a motion to approve items one through seven and to issue licenses if all taxes and... What else?
Taxes, utility bills, any village debt is paid.
Is there a motion? Jeff, you made a motion?
Second.
Second by Scott, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Item eight, cigarette licenses for Maisel Market, Maisel Mobile, Dollar General, Maisel Liquor. Is there a motion? Sue. By Scott.
Second.
Second by Troy, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Item nine, license for outdoor café, Wall Street Gallery and Bistro. Is there a motion? Motion by Jeff.
Second.
Second by Troy, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed by the same sign, that motion is carried. Moving on to item ten, introduce initial resolution for the vacation of Franklin Street north of Ann Street. I'll read this. And we're not approving this resolution, folks. Let's note that Jerry removed himself from the discussion from the table. We're not approving this resolution, aye. We are simply introducing this. There will follow a, I believe, a forty-day period of publication. And the resolution will be brought back to you for final approval. This was presented to us by the school district and the Springsfield...
The board also needs to set the public hearing date. And the public hearing date would be July twenty-third, 2019, at six o'clock.
We'll include that in...
In the motion.
In the motion. So this is a resolution to vacate a portion of Franklin Street in the village of Maisel Manor, whereas the village board has the power to discontinue all or any part of the public way within the corporate limits of the village pursuant to section sixty-six point one zero zero three Wisconsin statutes, when the public interest requires it. And whereas the village board has the power to amend the official map of the village of Maisel Manor pursuant to section sixty-two point twenty-three sub-see, sub-see, Wisconsin statutes. And whereas the village staff recommend vacation of a portion of Franklin Street, whereas on, and this will be a date that will be... You're saying July?
July twenty-third.
Whereas on July twenty-third, assuming the plan commission meets on that date, the plan commission held a meeting and renewed the proposed vacation and recommended approval. And whereas vacation... And whereas vacation of the above public way will not result in a landlocked parcel or property. And whereas in accordance with section sixty-six point one zero zero three sub four sub B Wisconsin statutes, a hearing concerning the vacation was held before the village board on...
Well, that, that's the date, that'll be the twenty-third, the plan commission meeting has to be set.
Okay. And whereas the village board hereby determines in accordance with section sixty-six point one zero zero three sub four Wisconsin statutes, that the public interest requires the village to vacate, abandon and discontinue the portion of Franklin Street as described in the attached exhibits one and two, because it, because it is no longer necessary for use as a public right of way and is of no public utility. Now therefore be it resolved by the village board of the Village of Maisel Mania pursuant to section sixty-six point one zero zero three sub four Wisconsin statutes, that the public way described in the attached exhibits one and two is hereby vacated and discontinued because the public interest requires it. Be it further resolved that the official map of the Village of Maisel Mania be hereby amended in accordance with the provisions contained herein pursuant to section sixty-two point twenty-three sub six sub C Wisconsin statutes. Be it further resolved that the village clerk shall file a third red copy of this resolution with the register of deeds for Dane County. So we're simply introducing this initial resolution. Sue, is there a motion to accept the introduction of this?
We're just introducing it to the village board, vacating the right of way. And then we have to, and then they have to set the date for the public hearing, so I don't think, I don't think that you have to take any action because you're just introducing. The action won't come until the end.
That's what I understand.
So you need a motion to set that public hearing?
Yes.
Is there a motion to set then the public hearing for this resolution by the plan commission on July?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Okay.
Motion by Scott.
Second.
Second by Troy, discussion. There are none. All those in favor of establishing a date for the plan commission?
What is it for the village board public hearing?
For the village board public hearing. When is the plan commission?
Well, it may be reconsidered between May and twenty-third.
I understand. Thank you. This is more than confusing. So we just, we, we made a motion to set the July twenty-third public hearing for the village board. All those in favor of motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Okay. Item eleven, update on Village of Maisel Mania's social media presence. Natalie asked if this be put on the agenda, but as I recall, we had the recommendation for Bill Cole and Exeter, that, that we should avoid any social media presence for the village. Correct me, Peter, Sue?
I, I asked for a clarification about that. He said that we could, if we wanted to, do something where we are the sole posting entity. We have to keep all the, anything we post forever as part of the open records. So anything we would put on this, like if we had a Facebook page, we'd have to keep everything on there. But we, if we were to allow anyone to ask a question, say anything on its site, we have to let everyone do it, and we can't edit what they say. So he says you're just opening a huge can of worms by doing that and, and opening yourself up for trouble. So if we did anything, it would be strictly a one-sided, similar to our website, posting stuff on there where no one can add anything to it. Do I, I asked for a clarification on that, to be exact on that?
I'm not in agreement to have it, but just to have a free for all.
You can, you can put information out there so individuals can't have that, it could be just informative.
Right, right. It's like, it's one sided, we could put it, similar to our website, but we could put it on there wherever, whatever platform we use, that's one sided. They, no one can respond to it, no one can ask questions on that site. Obviously they can call and ask us and whatever other way, but it has to be just one sided.
I mean, I know it reaches out to a lot of people if it were to help something like Wild West Days or the Dane Dancer Festival, probably even a hundred more people. Isn't that one good tool?
And we just wouldn't have, we wouldn't be able to delete anything, everything on there available, which is a big deal because we don't have the story.
Unofficially, the village is already using Facebook platform to inform the public. Tara is doing it under her own name on Village Time, under What's Happening Maisel Mania. It would, in my opinion, be a more secure and professional manner to have a village page that people look to for information, and it would be easier managed.
How do you, how do you, I don't understand obviously, how do you ensure that nobody can, can post?
There's, there's security if you, like on Facebook.
You have administrative parameters that you control.
All right. I mean, everything from leaf pickup to whatever, it's gonna get the word out a lot quicker and probably a little bit less fun.
Well, right now what we do is update the website and then we send out texts, because we've got that texting program.
You can never overdo communication. You know, if it's, if it's one sided, if people aren't permitted to post, I, I don't have a problem with that.
So would you be running it, or would, would it be Sue?
Someone in charge.
Not me, I don't even go on Facebook.
And with Facebook to make it relevant from everything I've read or any social medias, you've gotta post something new at least twice a week to keep it relevant, otherwise people just stop posting that.
Once a week, who would?
But you would have, you would be able to draw from other organizations, so you could pick up on what fire does or what happens, and you could post those things out there.
Fire department has three administrative designees, and they're the only people that can have, change anything or post.
Are you excited about this?
I think it's necessary.
Yeah.
I think you just need to be mindful of how you use it. It's very easy to get caught into some traps of conversations, I mean, not being able to comment is helpful. It, it, it's helpful, but it's also hurtful, because if someone's trying to find information or trying to ask questions, which is happening on What's Happening Maisel Mania all the time, it, it's best to get the right information out there, rather than letting it just spread like wildfire.
That's a good point.
And so having it as a good source, because if some people are into What's Happening Maisel, they can, they can always write it, write it over to the site and say, this is where the accurate information is. But I think you need to be mindful of who's, who's posting, who's responsible for it, and the parameters that they post with.
Maybe even as far as having those people take some training, because I echo what he says. Fire department, we have had our people take some training on, to just reduce that risk.
It's, it's very easy to say the wrong word, and then it blows up. And it, people will look at things very differently, and then it's always there. So you gotta be really mindful of how you write things, where you write things, and when you do it. You know, if you're writing it at two in the morning, what are you doing at two in the morning, you know?
I would say we probably wouldn't have been able to raise as much money for this splashdown had we done this Facebook, but it just is, it's a black hole once you go in, and everybody responding to the comments at their appropriate time is, is very threatening.
And that's the other challenge, is that people have an expectation that you respond, and you've gotta be mindful of that. So setting that, those parameters up front, the communication up front, and almost referencing it will be helpful. I think maybe you want to just look at what some other communities are doing, and seeing how they're managing it, maybe talk to some neighbors.
I know some other ones are, are struggling, that's how I got in the conversation with Bill Cole in the first place.
Yeah.
Because I was with some other administrators, and they were struggling with some of the stuff that was being tied to them and on Facebook, so that's why he kind of gave his two cents. Of course, being a lawyer, two hundred dollars worth. Well, we were off the clock at that time.
So what are you looking for from this?
Well, it, it sounds like the, the consensus is that we should pursue this further, and I would suggest that Peter would be a good one to put in charge of this. I know Sue's schedule is such that she doesn't need another thing.
Peter probably doesn't need one.
No, I know, he probably doesn't, but he...
But this is, if we're gonna do it, this is important, we should get, and I don't think it should be more than staff.
Yeah. No.
I think, I think the motion would be to direct village staff to come back with recommendations on, on how best to establish a social media presence for the Village of Maisel Mania, and how to, how to manage it respectively.
They may not be Facebook, but maybe they, they want Instagram or something.
Instagram, could be a lot of other things, yeah. Just a couple dozen of them.
Is there a motion to that effect?
I like motions.
By Jeff.
I'll second that.
Second by Troy, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Item twelve, approved payment number one to rural construction for twenty nineteen Street and utility improvements, Crocker Street, High Street and Scott Street. It looks like the amount requested, one hundred five thousand nine oh one twenty-five. Mark, you're agreeable with this?
Yep.
Is there a motion? Motion by Jeff.
Second.
Second by Scott, to pay that dollar amount to rural construction, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion is carried. Item thirteen, brush, no, after three, have you got anything?
When they're around, I'm not around. When I'm around, they're not around.
Okay.
But there's still an agreeance with it, they still are willing to talk about something that is...
Well, they've, they've started cleaning up over there.
Yeah, okay. I just talked with Scott on Sunday, and he just said to, said the old man just wants to get ahold of you yet, but I haven't heard from him. And then also Mark and I have been trying to get, or Mark has been trying more than I have, to get a price on that tub grinder, find out how much that's going to cost. To grind up all the refuse.
Let me suggest, Ray, that maybe you and I can work on negotiations with...
With the brothers.
With the brothers. I was talking with Mark, and his plate is, is plenty.
It's pretty full.
We can do a conference call, we don't have to do a meeting in person, so we can set that up very easily, if you can...
I'll try to get ahold of them again tomorrow, but like I said, when I tried to get ahold of them, they're gone.
Just ask them what, what their availability, what day, what time, what place to call.
Okay.
And just as a follow-up, since we talked, I've talked to two contractors that do that grinding, and we should be looking at a quote this week, about two quotes.
Thank you. On that grinder, is that something we can use for parts, for own parts?
This is a semi-trailer sized machine that comes in, drains a pile of brush like you see at our site right now in a day, and they leave and they come back next year and do it again.
Okay.
So it's a two hundred thousand dollar machine. If, I'd love to play with it, if you want to buy one.
I didn't know if they just grind it up on site.
They'll grind it up on site, we can use the, the end product as mulch.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know how far it's ground up, you know, as far as that goes. Is it ground up without having a bunch of sticks in it and...
The price is based on how fine you want to grind, so that's part of what we have to work on.
That's something we gotta deal with, okay? I guess that's what I was getting.
They'll add some...
It could be big chunks that they're grinding up too, so...
Well, what usually happens, when it goes to the tub grinder, it comes out stringy, so some contractors have to grind it again, and then they can add color if you want that too, and the sky's the limit. More can I get in that price?
Okay.
Moving on, item fourteen, stream bank restoration of two eighteen Bridge Street. This is behind Kevin and Shelle Murphy's residence, if you haven't seen it, that is really moving fast. And years ago, the village put a sewer ladder diagonally across the back of that property, you know, your handings on it. And Mark tells me that, that stream bank is now within just a few feet of the exposure to that sewer pipe. So...
What? This has been on the radar screen for several years, I'm guessing. Somewhere about that timeframe ago, Jewel and Associates were contracted by the village to do a study and cost analysis, and at that time, it was not an imminent threat. There was time spent looking for grand money or ways to fund, it was three big restoration project, and it never happened. Between then and now, the D and R offered a stream bank repair in exchange for adhesion from Kevin Murphy, which he was not interested in, and over time, it has just continued to erode slowly and closer and closer to our, our sewer line. And what happened last August is a big sand and gravel deposit was left in this part of the stream, it's probably the size of this room, and it directs the water to an inside corner, which has just compounded the problem over the last seven months. And so there, there's far more damage that has taken place in the la- last half of year as there has in the last six years. And it changes every day. We're at, we, this is an emergency repair that can't get fixed soon enough. I met with our engineer and contractor, being Bain and Incorporated from Cross Plains, on site around the end of May, and in our meeting, our, our plan was to have them make an emergency repair, which would be one hundred feet of shoreline, and give us a quote for an additional one hundred feet, that we would look at ways to fund it as a project down the road. Since the end of May and today, it has changed to the point where we now, we need to fix it all, and if they would start tomorrow, that would be great by me. Honestly, about sixty or seventy percent of our raw sewage from our community flows through that pipe, and if it failed, it would be catastrophic. I met this morning with our engineer again, and Cody Lochner from Bain and Kevin Murphy, and we have a repair plan in place. We have permission from the D and R to proceed, the permit can follow the work, our engineer is working on the finishing up the permit process with the D and R. And Bain has a start date of June twenty-fourth, a week from Monday, is as soon as they anticipate getting there.
Estimated cost?
Estimated cost is thirty thousand twenty-five dollars for two hundred feet of riprap and armor stone, eighteen to thirty-six inches, and that's four hundred and seventy-five tons of armor stone and the restoration of Murphy's property at the conclusion of the
This is obviously not something that's budgeted, and so I expect that we... This is obviously not something that's budgeted and so I expect that we will be needing to do some borrowing, but I know these are projects, small projects, relatively small projects that we're gonna have to borrow from prior to the next bond. This is severe enough folks that we need to move on this.
I thought we already had, excuse me, Gary, but I thought we already agreed to move
that.
I thought I made a motion the last time that we were at the meeting, or two meetings ago.
We did, under the emergency flood.
And we said that we wanted to do it all.
Catch to that is I was authorized under the emergency repairs up to twenty-five thousand. This exceeds that. So, I think we need your action again to allow me to proceed.
Let's, let's allow Mark to proceed on this repair restoration. And, and let's not, let's not specify a dollar amount on this and that if emergency work needs to be done between now and June twenty-fourth, he's, he's authorized to take whatever action is necessary to, to, to do that. Is there a motion to that effect, Ray?
Second.
Seconded by Scott. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You weren't having a meeting, I asked DNR to pay for some of it. This is for you.
For what?
I asked from DNR to pay for some of it since it's their crack, but we can never do nothing too.
Yeah, it wasn't like the village hadn't approached them to do this quite some time ago and they said no.
We're out of time. We have to do something.
It looks pretty around Black Earth area when they did. Oh, you can see that from there.
Okay, moving on to item fifteen, recommendation from Vanguard on alternatives for hanging Christmas decorations out. Mark, do you wanna summarize that?
Sure, Ken. So, we have two types of Christmas decorations. We have the pole-mounted ones that are on each side of the street and hang on the streetlight poles and we have five locations where they're strung on a wire over the street. And then our electric utilities go all to remove overhead transmission lines and move everything underground. In some of these sites, there are no longer poles to hang decorations on, so Vanguard has asked to eliminate those five sites and have just the decorations on the streetlight poles. The other option is to have poles just for, at, at those five sites.
As I recall, what Sean was saying too at the utility commission meeting was that the poles that are there are in poor shape and would have to be replaced anyway. So, the recommendation from Vanguard and from the Public Works is to remove those poles.
It's probably something easier too if you feel that we need to decorate the downtown and feel a stroll and project or something. You don't have to have the cost for it.
I think the, the, the immediate need is to act on removal of the poles and then at a future meeting, we should discuss Christmas decorations. Is there a motion to act on the recommendation from Vanguard on removal of the poles?
Yes.
By Jeff. Thirty seconds. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most opposed by the same sign. The motion is carried. We're in the personnel, or committees, Personnel Committee, discussion of salary continuance to staff during period of medical recovery. We had a Personnel Committee meeting at five forty this evening and this, this issue came up. Tara approached me and she says, you know what? I'm not gonna have enough accumulated vacation and sick time to continue my salary. Is there any, any grade that I could work and deal with the village to continue that and use future sick or vacation days to compensate for that? My feeling is we have a good village staff, we wanna take care of our people. This is, this is a major medical issue for, for Tara and the recommendation from the Personnel Committee, and I'll read you this motion and it's rather long, subject to, to some wording changes tomorrow and I'll get you the Personnel Committee minutes tomorrow so you'll have that motion. So, the motion was made by Jerry and seconded by Troy. To permit village staff who have insufficient sick and/or vacation days accumulated with which to continue salary payments during a period of medical recovery, to allocate future specified sick and/or vacation days with which to reimburse the village for salary advance during a period of medical recovery. Further said employee, employees shall agree to such in writing and, and shall further agree to reimburse the village in full for any remaining funds advanced to the employee in the event that the employee terminates employment with the village prior to full repayment of the salary advance. All such advances shall be limited to sick and vacation days to be accrued during the following twelve-month period.
So, comp time would not...
We can add comp time.
Okay.
We can add comp time.
I do too. Yeah.
But that was implied.
Yeah, it, it was. So, that is a recommendation from the Personnel Committee to the village board. Is there a motion to accept that recommendation?
Motion.
Scott. Seconded by Ray. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion is carried. Thank you. I have no need for a meeting date. Two, Public Works and Property. Ray says nothing. Three, Parks and Rec.
Well, you have the minutes in front of you. We met, we walked the block, we walked Avenue Circle and Lynn's Park. And I, I hope that we can meet next, next meeting would be, be the same thing July second, we will hit Lake Marion and then Green's Conservancy. All are invited. Maybe by then, it's, since, one of you could, one of you could be there and talk to us about Lake Marion as we're down there. Meeting's gonna be at four o'clock. We could meet at three, is that's easier for employees? What do you wanna do? I, well, I'll, I'll leave it up to you.
What's the date?
July second.
Whatever it was.
So, we could probably have a specialist down there so that us discussing what's going on. So, do we wanna keep it at four o'clock or can we change it to three?
Three's...
Two or three.
Okay, no, I can...
So, let's change that to three o'clock and we'll hold it either here or Gary or Mark or there. That's it.
Thank you, Jerry.
Number four.
Can I get on your email list?
Nope.
Then I may not see it there.
Jerry, same July.
That's the first two, you can't do it.
I can't do it.
Okay, so we can't do it. Alright, we'll discuss.
Well, you could have Natalie, you could have a quorum. Probably a pretty shame.
Okay, Public Protection and Ordinance.
Yep. I know.
I have a question.
Yes.
Isn't that longer as ordinance and I don't know if this is there's a particular reason that that flood plain, those flood plain properties are in there, that they can't be, that they can't be forced basically to cut their grass? Is that something that we want to remove? Because if I were the neighbors, I would not want those properties next to me.
I would think so.
So... Got a job, John. Do you want me to contact Bill Cole and find out if that could be...
That's the guy you're right.
Do you want me to contact Bill Cole and then find out if that could be removed?
Yes.
Actually, I think on this line would be better with, with Bear Baker, because he's the one that's, does all the zoning and the codes and ordinances, especially with flood plain. So, he would know if there's a reason that, that the top grass is in the river with flood plain, not Bear Baker.
Vandal?
Vandal, I'm sorry.
Do you want contact him or do you want me to?
I, either way, I can get you contact in future if you work on it. Yeah, I think he might be better than Bill Cole.
Okay.
Because Bill doesn't know about the flood ordinances.
And give me a call or give me an email.
Okay.
Send a reading.
We don't have the finance with Troy.
No updates, we haven't met yet. We've been per motion to approve the expenses.
Is there a motion to approve payment of bills?
Payment of bills.
Motion by Jeff.
Second.
By Jeff Scott. Discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. The motion is carried. In your package also, the summary of the utilities and the general fund. Everything is in the black. And that is it. I would, I would call your attention to the fact that without Ray and Scott, we had a twenty-four minute meeting. With Ray and Scott, it was sixty-one minutes.
Just can't stop talking, you know?
Great. You just gotta shut up.
Okay, any, any announcements other than...
I have an announcement for you. Two weeks from last Saturday, we will take delivery of the Quayron.
Oh, really? Nice. Boy. So, should we give the Billy Ford rider a towel there? Blowing the siren all the way?
Oh, yeah.
That traumatizes me.
I can see that you didn't...
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is a motion and a second. Jeff? In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.